My name is Mark Cooney. I currently live in Syracuse, New York, 228 Milburn Drive. I appreciate this opportunity to address the Honorable Mayor and the Council. We are still here with unanswered questions which I guess could be put to rest with an available for public review. What particular studies the Council are referring to have conducted or reviewed to put us at ease to have them recommend reversing this decision? Personally, I would like to hear from the wastewater plant’s design engineer or representative because the top two pending questions still are: What is this particular plant designed to effectively treat? And does this plant actually have the capability of treating to the point of harmless suspected chemicals used in the drilling process? The high levels of salts and chlorides? And possible radiation heavy metals which occur in flowback gas waters? So, can you answer how effective is this plant in removing totally dissolved solvents? Or are we just going to flush them down the river again diluted? And how are you basing what accumulative effect millions and millions more gallons of this gas flowback water extremely high in chloride and salts will have on the longevity functioning operation of your plant? Ms. Murphy has stated, “Well, there didn’t seem to or appear to be any damage.” Where is the expert testimony from the plant engineers as to what that possible damage may be in the long run? You can get away with pleading ignorance a year ago. There’s no pleading ignorance now. There’s too much information as to what’s involved in these waters. There’s too much information involved that these plants cannot effectively remove totally dissolved solvents or these chemicals from these waters. And yet, you are still recommending willingly flushing them down the river diluted, which is basically all that plant is capable of doing. So maybe you would be willing to go personally on record, anyone who’s willing to vote yes, let’s reverse this process. So you would go on record to personally accept the liability and the responsibility when the downstream neighbors become aware of the ineffective treated cancer-causing chemicals entering their drinking water or recreation waters? And decide that maybe they’d like to sue the city of Auburn to have this stopped? Or question it? Or that maybe five years from now, oh, what, Ms. Murphy comes before the staff and says, “Well, we do have damage now.” Gee, I wonder what that’s from? So, before you make a vote and you decide to vote yes, there should be some liability not passed on to citizens of Auburn if you have any question in your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Roseanne DeLuca. I live at 6 Hamilton Avenue. I’ve been a resident of Auburn for about 12 years. Last summer, I drew water from my kitchen tap and there was an oil slick on it. It wasn’t oil. It was clear, but it was iridescent. I became very alarmed. I threw the water down the sink. What was that? The second thing I want to say is, on November 30th last year, I attended the DEC meeting in New York City. Everyone who cares about the environment was there. The NRDC, Josh Fox, Mark Ruffalo, who is in charge of, who started Water Defense League. Everyone knew about Auburn, New York, and it got applause, and it was in several people’s speeches, that we had rescinded taking the fracking water and putting it through our water treatment system. And now we’re going to take it back again? I don’t want Auburn to be thought of nationally as a bunch of ignorant groups.
Ready? Andy Miller, 217 Woodlawn Avenue. Why were there $0 of revenue coming into Auburn from drilling wastewater weeks before the ban went into effect? Because there was too much pollution in the wastewater. And here’s the proof, is the letter signed by Auburn’s Director of Municipal Utilities, Vicky Murphy, over two weeks before the ban, that told talisman to stop delivering wastewater. This letter proves two crucial points. One, anyone who says that there weren’t any problems or incidents with pollution in the wastewater is a liar. The letter defines a problem: iron, barium, zinc, chloride. Number two, anyone who says that the ban deprived Auburn of $600,000 in revenue is a liar. Too much pollution in the wastewater deprived Auburn of a hypothetical maximum estimate of $600,000. It also shows that the expert that we brought to explain the issue to us, Walter Hang of ToxicsTargeting.com, was right. The industrial waste requires a tertiary treatment facility, not a sewage treatment plant. Now, let’s be clear, this is not high-volume fracking wastewater we’re talking about. But it includes low-volume fracking wastewater, which just has a lower volume of the same Now, Kyouge Anti-Fracking Alliance got this letter using foil. Without their diligent research, the hysterical lies about $600,000 and no incidents or pollution would stand unchallenged. That’s not hysteria, that’s intelligent research, facts, and data. Now, on the subject of revenue, here’s a story from the Citizen newspaper, Saturday 4th, February 4th, 2012. Auburn hopes to soon get the turbines spinning again at Mill Street Dam. On Thursday, the city council unanimously approved an agreement with New York State Energy Research and Development Authority to sell the renewable energy credits produced by the hydroelectric dam. Selvick said if the project goes ahead, the four megawatts of power produced by the dam could nearly offset the 5.5 megawatts used by the city annually. If we go through with the net metering-
Miller, I’m sorry, your time is up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Arnold. I live at 29 Logan Street. I have just one question. Two years ago, the city won an award for being one of the best little cities in this country to live in. If we accept fracking fluid, what is our chances of ever winning that kind of award again? Thank you.
David Carver, 3080 Route 90, Aurora, New York. I see Mr. Hang is following me, and I’m glad to see that. I spent a lot of time in Ithaca. I contradanced there, and most of my friends live in Ithaca. However, I’ve had significant connections with Auburn. I’m a massage therapist, and I do health. I’m concerned about people’s health, and generally, how people regard their bodies and how they use their bodies, what they eat, how they exercise, what they do with their minds. Our bodies are mostly made out of water. They used to say about 95% water, and now they’ve reduced it, I think, to 65 or 70%. But water is what we are mainly of. Sandra Steinbrenner talks about this a lot in her book. If you have not read anything about Sandra Steinbrenner and what she does, I suggest you do that. When we talk about what is current health advice and health knowledge, we’re talking about minute chemicals. At one time, we only thought of poisons. Now, we talk about hormone disruptors and carcinogens which work very differently than just general overdose of toxics in poisoning us. Hormone disruptors are a very different thing, and affect your hormone system and how your body operates. And what you put in water makes a really big difference, and small amounts can do big things in ways that we are just discovering. The person that’s done a lot of the work on this concerning drilling is Theo Coburn in Colorado. She, if you Google her, you can see a lot more about hormone disruption. I grew up in Niagara Falls. My father was a chemical engineer for DuPont. He was also on the Board of Education, and the Board of Education accepted Love Canal, paid a dollar to hook a chemical corporation. I have a lot of feelings about this. I grew up in the middle of the upper Niagara River. I swam in that river, I boated in that river. The chemicals that have been somewhat dumped upstream have come down from Buffalo. I believe North Tonawanda has accepted some of this stuff, and now in Auburn, you want to accept it. This is obscene. Vertical wells are also hydrofract, by the way, as other people have discussed, and chemicals go in there also, and they come out. And to act as though this is okay because we’ve done it in the past, yeah, right. I used to get drunk in the past, too, when I was young and ignorant. Somewhere in there, it’s time to get some brains and start to think about what you’re doing and where you’ve been, what this planet is all about, what you’re made out of, and what you want to leave to future generations. I was glad to see when this ban went through that Ithaca, who has had a lot of discussion about this and has great resources with Cornell University and Professor Ingraffia and various other people, and the person following me, Walter Hang, who lives in Ithaca, that Auburn could actually be talked about in a favorable way in Ithaca. If you change this, this is going to be very different.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Walter Hang. I live at 218 Wade Avenue in Ithaca, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. So, a couple of things. Number one, the gas drilling wastewater is basically composed of two components. The first is what’s called flowback. So 90% of the vertical wells in New York State are hydrofract. That means the fracking fluid is pumped into the well under enormous pressure, cracks the rock. This facilitates the release of the gas and oil. Then, when you take the pressure off of the system, that fracking fluid flows back up out of the pipe, but only maybe 5% to 36%. The second, more important problem, is what’s called produced water, otherwise known as brine. So as the gas is coming up out of the well for its entire lifetime, you get this material called brine. That’s because it has a lot of sodium and chloride. It also has extremely high levels of what are called total dissolved solids. These include toxic metals, lead, barium, mercury, chromium. On top of that, you have up to 73,000 parts per billion of what are called total petroleum hydrocarbons. This is in the diesel range. This makes sense because a lot of gas is mixed with oil. Finally, you have radionuclides. So the bottom line is, your local secondary wastewater treatment plant is not designed, constructed, or maintained in any way to handle these three kinds of constituents. The total dissolved solids go right through. The toxic organic chemicals either vaporize in the plant where they pose a hazard to the workers, or they can actually concentrate in the sludge, or they can pass through. The radionuclides can actually contaminate the structure, they can contaminate the sludge, they can pass through. So for these reasons, I implore you not to rescind this ban. It would just be a huge mistake. It sounds very simple, we’ll just monitor. But there are thousands of individual constituents, and there are currently no standards. So the bottom line is, as you know, there’s no horizontal hydrofracking in New York State because the Department of Environmental Conservation is trying to come up with comprehensive environmental and public health safeguards, but we don’t know when that’s going to happen. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, as a result of the New York Times piece, is coming up with what are called categorical pretreatment standards. We don’t have them yet. I was hired 35 years ago to review those standards. They were never proposed. So in conclusion, we have a regulatory vacuum. We have this wastewater, it’s been generated for decades, it’s been dumped on roads, but again, it hasn’t been properly characterized. If you look at the documents that are submitted to the city of Auburn from the companies generating the wastewater, it’s NS, not sampled, not sampled, not sampled. No one really knows what’s in that wastewater, and that’s how come I beg of you, don’t rescind this ban. It would be a huge mistake. It would be irresponsible. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Meryl Mandillo. I live on Route 34B in Aurora. And I’m going to complete Dick Miller’s last part that he didn’t get to finish real quick. Basically, he was finishing with, “When you read this material, I believe you cannot avoid the realization that flushing these toxins into the Wasco River would be grossly irresponsible and an unconscionable act of willful disregard for the health of the environment and that for future, and for future generations. This environment does not belong to us, really. It belongs to our children and their future. We are at stewards, so will you be responsible stewards? Or will you make a conscious decision to continue to degrade their environment for a questionable piece of, a few pieces of silver?” I shortened my statement. I went to the actual background of the resolution and to the actual resolution itself. You made the point that the city believes this water has not harmed the waste treatment plant. Has a study of the quantity of brine and its concentrations, have they been done and put through the system? Have the records for repairs and maintenance of this system been reviewed? If this is true, has it been presented to the public? Or is it available to the public? Second, the city council believes the treatment of this water is within the permitted issue of the New York State DEC. Will you present a statement from them saying this? Third, the city has accepted vertical gas well water for many years without its ill effects, without ill effects. Point, to make ill effects, I’m sorry, to what ill effects are you referring? Please be specific. Treatment water moves from the Wasco Lake and heads north, so the effects would not be in the Wasco Lake, but it would be in the Seneca River and onto Lake Ontario. And as mentioned, Anadagga Lake is an example of when they used dilution as the solution to pollution. Eventually, it did kill the lake. It just takes time. And to the resolution itself, it states, “After additional studies and consideration,” that was quote-unquote. Where are these studies and the considerations? Are they on the website? And what was studied? In closing, there’s been a lack of transparency regarding water that has been taken in from natural gas development. Why should we believe that you have or will change the process that would protect our water, among other things? Has the city researched and written a report that shows all the components of radioactive levels and salt that has come from the vertical well water? Transparency is needed if you expect the residents of the county and surrounding counties that will be directly affected by what water comes through the system to believe that the water will be safe. Are the residents of the city ready to take on the additional large tanker trucks that will come through? Is our city able to withstand lawsuits from the polluted waters, from the towns, villages, downstream from this?
Sorry, ma’am, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Lovelace, East Lincoln Street, Ithaca, New York. I’m Communications Director for Neighbors United Finger Lakes, which is headquartered in Locke, New York. Listening to the excellent presentations by citizens, I just came up with a couple of questions that I would like the city to consider. It is my understanding that wastewater treatment plants during times of heavy rains or heavy snow melt-off are allowed to discharge water into the waterways that does not meet normal standards for discharge. Will the city have a method of storing these fracking fluids, these drilling fluids, so that they are not run through the treatment plant during those times? My other question for consideration is, given that the industry is doing recycling of their discharged fluids, what is to prevent them, if anything, from taking fluids from high-volume horizontal wells? Then recycling them through a vertical well to make them appear as if they’re acceptable for the treatment plant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carla Ruder, and I live on 6736 East Lake Road, Auburn, New York. Today, I was at my, in my office, and I was reading some emails, and I received one from Manufacturing Net concern from, concerning the Niagara Falls, from the AP Associated Press. And I just, I’m not a public speaker, I’m just a mom and a businessperson, and I thought I might, would like to highlight a few of the things in this article. Niagara Falls, which we already know has gone on record against treating wastewater from hydrophobic fracking, and its elected officials say they don’t want the city that endured the Love Canal toxic waste crisis to be a test case for the technology used in gas drilling. The city council approved an ordinance Monday that prohibits natural gas extraction in Niagara Falls, as well as storage, transfer, treatment, or disposable disposal of natural gas exploration and production. The city’s specialized plant was designed to handle chemical waste and has the capacity to take wastewater from gas drilling. They have the capacity to handle chemical waste. Do we? Does our facility? I don’t know. And this is what some of the council people said. “I researched it, and it came to the point where money can’t be everything,” Councilman Glenn Kokalen, the measured sponsor and member of the Water Board, said. “We can’t be a test case. We’ve been through Love Canal, and we don’t want another Love Canal.” Another response was, “We’re not selling our future generation of our children for corporate greed,” said Councilman Sam Frenchus, who also attended school in the Love Canal neighborhood as a child. Here’s another one. “It doesn’t only affect them and their residents, it affects communities downstream,” said Rita Yilda of Food and Water Watch, which praised the passage of the resolution. And finally, the council Monday also passed a resolution urging Governor Andrew Cuomo to ban hydrofracking statewide pending further review by the federal environmental officials. On Tuesday, that was yesterday, the Buffalo Common Council passed a resolution supporting state legislation to prohibit hydrophobic fracking and the treatment of wastewater in the state. The council sent a letter to Cuomo calling for standard, excuse me, calling for a statewide ban on drilling. So, in summary, I think we ought to think very clearly about not passing, not passing this. And I think that we need to continue to have a ban on treating wastewater. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Diane Miller. I live at 33 Meadowbrook Drive. I had not planned to speak tonight. I cannot not speak. I have very few words. I cannot believe we are back again about this. It seems that nothing has been learned that is new. There is no understanding of how bad this is. I cannot believe that we would even consider doing this. Even if it doesn’t affect Auburn, what about downstream? How dare we? We can’t do that. And again, I will say, as a mother, as a grandmother, as a retired nurse from this community who helped take care of this community, how dare we think about doing this to our families that exist here now, to those that come? And I resent the fact that my grandchildren may be exposed to this. I just can’t believe we’re doing this again. Again, I’ll bring up the fact that my sister, who lives in Bradford County, PA, is living this. A 20-inch gas line, which they tried to put across their property, has now been installed right next door. It might as well be on their property. They are raising grass-fed beef. They are doing all types of organic things and trying to live in a good, healthy way. And then this comes through. You know, many of you disregard Josh Fox’s film. I have been by those homes. I have looked at the water buffaloes on their front porches. I know about their children that are sick, and there is no help. Don’t be a part of this. Please, do not do this. We cannot risk this. I hope that you hear us this time, and that we don’t have to come back about this. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Holland Gregg. I live on 3872 Jordan Road in Skinny Atlas. I’m the Chief Operating Officer of a small business over there. We have a warehouse in Auburn, 40,000 square feet on York Street. We love Auburn. We see where it’s going. We see the Theater District taking off. We see this city coming to life, and we’re thrilled. It’s a very exciting time for Auburn. And I like to appeal to you personally as businesspeople. You guys, you guys are businesspeople, right? You work in business, I would assume. I’m a businessperson, and I’m trying to figure out what the upside is for this on a business standpoint. You know, there’s going to be some funds possibly for this, for the city, possibly. But the consequences of something terrible happening to the city are so extreme that if I were a businessman and I was presented with the upside and the downside, I would not go for this. I would not go for this. There is so much trouble lurking in this from a business standpoint, that I would say to myself, “Can I make $150,000 this year? And if I get sued, I’m going to get sued for $2 million this year if something goes wrong. Or I’m going to get sued for $20 million if something goes wrong.” And I think that you have to look at it, I’m assuming that you guys are successful businesspeople, and if no other appeal that you’ve heard tonight is connecting, let’s talk business. And let’s figure out how Auburn could actually look itself in the eye and say, “Yes, this is a great idea. Let’s see if we can make $150,000 or $300,000, and then we’ll just take whatever risks come along.” And those risks are huge, and you’re in the big leagues now. These gas companies are not kidding around. And it would be so easy for you just to say, “Uh-uh. We’re going to be like everybody else in this state. We’re going to, we’re going to make the same decisions everybody else in this state is making,” because it’s the right thing to do. It’s not a good business decision. So I appeal to your business sense, this is not a good idea. That’s all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Just, just, many of you here are here for the first time. Is that, I don’t, chief, I don’t know the gentleman’s left, and you’re looking for the council to answer some of your questions.
I have a rhetorical question.
Okay, but at the same time, due to our rules and regulations, we’re not allowed to debate you. Okay? So it’s not that the council or anyone is trying to be rude, it’s just the way this operates. So, for you and for everyone else, just a point. Please, ma’am.
My name is Devon Robley. I reside at 7 Orchard Street with my husband and our two children, very young children. My husband and I are college-educated, and I own a business here in town, a photography business. I was born and raised here in Auburn. I have a lot of pride for my hometown. I have a huge network of family and friends. As residents of the Orchard Street neighborhood, which is currently undergoing revitalization, we were very excited to discover an opportunity to purchase the house we currently rent. We, like I said, we take pride in our city and its rich history and the natural beauty that surrounds us, and we hope to continue to raise our children here. However, the possibility that council could overturn the ban on accepting toxic wastewater from gas drilling into Auburn Sewage Treatment Plant leaves a bad taste in our mouth. No pun intended, but we have no desire to see this city, which has begun to show so much promise and economic growth from tourism, we all know about things that are up and coming around here. You know, we have no desire for it to become one of the places in this part of the country that accepts toxic wastewater. It is bad enough that- It is bad enough that I have friends and outsiders from the city that refer to this hometown, my hometown, as the prison city, who in their right mind would want to make their family vacation plans, considering spending a night or two in the city with the state prison and the state wastewater dump? Now, with this in mind, my husband and I are actually reconsidering our decision to buying the house on Orchard Street. And furthermore, if the wastewater ban is lifted, we plan to leave the city, and I'm sure I'm not alone with a lot of young people, young, you know, well-educated people in this town. I think I speak for a few of them. We feel there's far too much risk involved in the transport and treatment, transport and treatment of this toxic wastewater. Think of all the watersheds that we have around here. What if there was a spill? Oops. I ask the council, for the sake of my family, my friends, the people of this city, my children, I ask you to uphold the city's ban on accepting the wastewater into our sewage treatment plant. Thank you very much.
We were here for four months as a group of concerned citizens from Auburn to appeal to our elected officials, and I'm shocked that I'm here after one week that a councilor's proposed to rescind a ban that took four months to enact. So the present resolution on the agenda tonight to rescind the ban on natural gas drilling wastewater enacted July 7, 2011, fails to acknowledge any of the past violations. It doesn't acknowledge that these companies were out of compliance at all. In fact, it just assumes that everything was okay before this ban was enacted. The ban was enacted as a result of these companies, not us not being able to trust them, and our acknowledgement of our inability to monitor ourselves. So I'm asking the council to table the vote until prior non-compliance issues have been thoroughly addressed and remedied in a meaningful way. I agree with my colleagues that it is imperative to wait until the DEC has final SGEIS and the EPA has categorical pretreatment standards. So as I said, I'm asking you to wait before you rescind this, to think about what has been said tonight. There is a lot that has been said by Auburnians and those of the surrounding communities. And I'd like to finish, and I agree with my mother-in-law, Patty Beer. We will promise, this is her speaking for all of us, we will promise to be unceasing and following up if the ban is lifted. You didn't do your job before. We don't trust you'll do it this time. We'll be watching every step and reporting to the DEC and EPA in the future. In closing, there was a clever title given to the ban, "The Revenue Reduction Act." We give you a title for this resolution, "The Toxic Wastewater Capital of New York State Act." It should fit well with our hopes of attracting tourists in our area. It worked well for Love Canal. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Moore. I live at 12 Holly Drive in Homer, New York. I had no intention on speaking this evening. I will be brief. I'm a science educator. This issue, the catalyst for Onondaga Lake, for Love Canal, is scientific illiteracy. Think wisely. Thank you.
My name is Doug Ward. I live at 110 North Sewer Ave. I'll try to be brief as well because I've spoken with all the members of the council. I'd like to address the city manager and the city attorney as well. These are four newspapers. One of them talks about the biggest problem the gas drilling industry has, and that's what to do with their waste. Okay? The second one is the classified ad that was taken out by the Municipal Utilities Department, saying that we were in violation. That explains why, the dating, June 22nd, explains why that was enacted before the ban went into effect. The other two newspapers explain why we're here tonight. I have three questions. One, I want to ask all of you, what do you want Auburn to be known for? We've talked about history's hometown, theater and a cultural center, a hub for wine and recreational tourism, or are we going to be a friend of the driller? Are we going to be the wastewater center of upstate New York? Second question, will it be worth it? It's been addressed. Do you see enough revenue coming in, in reality, maybe, to make it worth it? That gentleman there spoke about, from a business standpoint, does this make any sense at all? I wondered about, the third question would be, are you really going to represent what the people want? Think about it. Think about how many people are here. I know there's people here from both sides, but think about what people in the city and the surrounding areas, especially those downstream from us, are going to think about us if we start doing this all over again. That's all I want you to think about. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sandra Porter from Syracuse, and what I'd like to say about, when you look at the economic benefits as opposed to the possible risks, growing up in Syracuse, Onondaga Lake was like a bad joke, and one of the things we used to remark about is that you could smell dead fish for blocks and blocks from the lake. And my neighbor had a dog who used to swim in Onondaga Lake. He came home smelling of dead fish. That beautiful lake, over decades, I know it was like that when I was a kid, so it's at least fifty, sixty years old of not being able to use that lake. If you think in terms of strictly economic benefits, think of how many, how much in ways of dollars, maybe, I would say millions, maybe way more of benefit that that would have gotten to the city of Syracuse had that lake been a beautiful lake. Nobody can swim it. Boats go on it, and we've had regatta on it. Nobody can swim in it. And the cost of restoring it now, they still don't know how to do it because there are heavy metals and things at the bottom of the lake. If you try and clean it up, you're going to disturb those things, and that could make the situation even worse, so we're in a total conundrum. We still cannot use that beautiful, beautiful lake. Looks gorgeous flying in. You can't swim in it. You can't really have recreation with it.
Anyone else? Last chance. We'll close that portion of our meeting. Council, would you like to take about a ten-minute break? You want to keep going?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going.